Good evening. I'd like to call the work session on Wednesday, January fourth, two thousand and twenty-three to order at six P M. The first agenda item is ordinance number two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, amending the Laurel City Code, Chapter sixteen taxation, Article one, to amend Section sixteen dash ten, elderly and veteran tax credit program and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Director.
You're on me, Director Saylor. It's been a while. It's okay.
Happy New Year. This ordinance number two thousand and three was discussed at the November work session. There were a couple of questions which I went back and clarified and got answers with Mr. Taub. Just to remind everybody, this was taking our elderly and senior citizen and veterans tax credit, real estate tax credit from a minimum of forty years living at the property to ten years. This also includes surviving spouses of veterans who have not remarried. And it also increases the maximum assessment from three hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand. And it increases the the tax credit from ten percent of the city taxes to twenty percent. Mr. Sidnor had asked if we could split the veterans from the from the seniors. But based on the state law, we cannot do that. But this does provide, I wanted to point out on page two, what was already included was if you have a service-related disability, you don't have to be sixty-five to get the tax credit. So you could be active duty or retired military. But with a service disability, it doesn't matter your age. So you'd still be eligible for this tax credit. So that's all I have to update at this time, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Well, if the council agrees, introduction and first public hearing on this item will be at the mayor city council meeting on Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P M. The next agenda item is ordinance number two thousand and four, M X T concept site plan, number nine three five, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland to approve mixed-use transportation-oriented development to develop a three zero, three hundred and two residential units corridor center community at the properties known as six eight twenty, sixty-nine hundred, six nine zero two, and six nine twenty. Conti Road in one five two zero three Pirate Lane, Laurel, Maryland, two south, two zero seven zero seven, submitted by the Polk Home Company LLC and providing an effective date. Deputy Director Burrow, you have the floor.
Thank you and good evening and happy new year, Mr. President, Mayor, and City Council. This is Monte Burrow, Deputy Director, Economic and Community Development. Before you is M X T concept site plan application number nine three five, ordinance number two zero zero four, as required by the City of Laurel code providing legislation to approve a concept plan to develop three hundred and two residential units at the properties known as sixty-eight twenty, sixty-nine hundred, sixty-nine oh two, sixty-nine twenty, Conti Road, and one five two zero three Pirate Lane, Laurel, Maryland, two zero seven zero seven. The applicant is seeking M S T site concept plan approved to develop a three hundred and two residential units, which will include open space, community center with a pool and a playground area, sitting area, sidewalk and trail system. The applicant proposes to construct a hundred and forty-four stacked townhome condominium units, two-family, fourteen active adult villa homes, thirty feet by seventy feet, and a hundred and forty-four single-family attached townhome inclusive of the twelve live-work units. The live-work units will be three-story plus a habitable attic with rear garage access, outdoor living on both the second and habitable act. The total amount of land to be developed is approximately twenty-eight point twenty-four acres. The applicant will be required to obtain plat of consolidation approval, force conservation plan approval, preliminary subdivision plan approval, and final M X T concept site plan approval from the planning commission. The applicant and their team would now like to make a presentation. Thank you, Mr. President.
I understand we have a Mr. Ed Gibbs and his team here to provide a presentation on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Gibbs, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, thank you very much, sir. Good evening. And my name is Edward Gibbs. I am a land use attorney with offices in Largo, Maryland. And I am here this evening very pleased and quite frankly, very proud to be able to represent Polty Home Company and the Polty Group, who they are the applicant for this conceptual site plan. And by way of introduction, I would like to note that Mr. David DiMarco of Polty is with us this evening. He is really has as part of his responsibilities overseeing development in the entire eastern United States for Polty. And so he is here with us this evening and has intimate knowledge of the conceptual site plan that we have filed. In addition, we have Mr. Ken Dunn from our civil engineering firm, Soltes, who has designed the conceptual site plan. And while transportation is not a required criterion, it'll be addressed really at the preliminary subdivision plan stage, but we do have Mr. Wes Gucker to the traffic group with us this evening as well. All of these folks are available to respond to any questions that you may have. I would like to make some some introductory comments if I could relative to Polty and their operations, the property and the conceptual site plan. I realize this is a work session and it's not my intent to give a full presentation of the application per se, but I do think a few comments are in order. I would like to note that I am indeed very happy to be representing Polty this evening. They are highly, highly sought after residential developer, constructor of residential communities, including the community infrastructure associated with those communities. They are the third largest home builder in the United States. They commenced their operations in nineteen fifty. They have incredible staying power. They've built over seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand homes across the United States since nineteen fifty. They have a full range of product types that they offer. And 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 they've actually proposed to incorporate many of those product types within this conceptual site plan. They have currently under construction communities in watershed, which is in, you know, the Laurel area. As a matter of fact, I think some council members have had an opportunity to to view the watershed community with its sensitive architectural treatments, its sensitive bio-retention stormwater management facilities. Polty is also developing the flats at National Harbor and a project called Crown Farm over in Gaithersburg. This property is quite interesting. It it when I initially drove out there, you can't be helped but be taken by the fact that it's somewhat isolated. It's a little bit of an island, but it's it's located strategically at the intersection of I ninety-five on the northbound lanes and Maryland one ninety-eight. So automatically it qualifies for consideration of being developed in the M X T zone as it is a piece of strategically located property at an interchange of major roadways. That's one of the criteria in your code. We have five separate parcels owned by five separate entities. When you put them all together, it's twenty-eight, just short, just shy of twenty-eight and a half acres of land. It's it's interesting because the access to the property will come from the intersection of Pirate Lane and Conti Road. And Conti Road runs out to intersect with Cherry Lane as well. And and so, but but even though it is isolated, so to speak, the development in the area, meaning, you know, along Conti Road, along Cherry Lane, is really consists of a series of primarily residential developments with two churches and a school. So that's sort of the character of the area. The your ordinance provides that a property which is zoned M X T, and this property was was placed in the M X T zone. We did, we did not rezone it. It's already in that zoning classification, but your your ordinance requires that when property is zoned M X T, it's got to go through a conceptual site plan. There must be a preliminary subdivision plan and thereafter a detailed site plan and final, final record plats of subdivision. So this is, in fact, the conceptual site plan. And I don't know, Mr. Burrow, do you, can you put up the conceptual site plan on the screen? Is that possible? If not, I can just talk about it a little bit.
Oh, Mr. Ed, I don't have control. If Sarah may have it, but if not, you probably have to go ahead and present it.
Okay, I I don't, you know, I don't have a way to put that up myself, but let me just talk about it for a second. So what we're proposing to do here is we're proposing to extend Pirate Lane from its intersection of Conti Road in a northerly direction to come into the property. Once we get on the property, all of the internal roads will be private. There is, for lack of a better term, sort of a spine road that runs, will run through the property. And and then off of that, there will be a series of smaller, less, less wide, private streets that will serve the individual units. As Mr. Burrow mentioned in his initial presentation, we're going to have a a mix of units and product types. And of the three hundred and two total units, we're going to have a hundred and forty-four, which are stacked units, which are twenty-four feet wide by fifty feet in depth. And there we go. There we go. Okay, so that is the conceptual site plan drawing. And I might add, you know, this is more of an illustrative plan. We have sort of a bubble diagram, which is what the conceptual site plan ordinance requires. This is much more detailed than what the ordinance requires, but we wanted to provide as much information as possible on a conceptual basis at this point in the hearing. So as you come in, you can see Conti Road and there's Pirate Lane right there. There we go. And as you come in, you will see the sort of the dark tan units to the left and and to the right. And so those are traditional residential townhomes and they are twenty-two feet in what in width and forty feet deep, the lots themselves. And there are forty-four of those units. And as you, then as you continue to proceed north, on the right-hand side, you will see a series of twelve units, which are have sort of a salmon-type color, and those are the live-work units. They have been strategically located at the entrance to the property so as to make sure that any work type of visitors to the units will not be driving through the entire community. And I will talk a little bit more about the live-work component in just a few minutes. Directly on the other side of the road, we have, we have our our community facilities. So there's a community clubhouse and meeting area. There's a swimming pool to the left of that in the blue color, and then there's a playground to the left of that. So we're going to have just quite a, quite a very interesting and pleasing recreational component to the project. As the road continues to swing up, what what we're having, you see in that very, very light, almost a light green color, maybe the lightest tan you could imagine. You have that color in three different areas of the project, right there where the cursor is being moved. Then over to the right, we have it again. And then up in the extreme northeast corner of the project, you see it again. And so those are one hundred and forty-four of the condominium-style units. They're, they're, they have traditionally been called two-over-two units. And and so they they will be strategically located in the in the areas of the project that you see. As you continue to swing up the road, you'll see a darker tan unit color. And those are traditional townhouses, but they are sixteen feet wide with a single garage. All the other units have double garages, but these are are single garages, sixteen-feet-wide units. And 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 then as you go over to the extreme eastern edge of the property, you see the villa homes. And there are fourteen of those. They're thirty feet wide by seventy feet deep. And so those are more or less what we would call sort of, you know, the seat, they're, they're very appealing to seniors. The large bedroom is on the ground floor so that you can live primarily on the first, on the first level. And so the, this is a very intense, and then, of course, we have the last section of townhomes there in, you know, sort of a different shade of tan as well. And those are twenty-two by forty with rear-loaded garages, forty-four of those units. Polty prides itself on presenting a variety of housing types and and diversity of housing types in their communities. Their objective is to reach different age levels, different incomes strata, so that we have opportunities for homes that are not quite as expensive as the others, but yet they're all located in the same community, providing a synergy for the residents and who who become neighbors. So we have the villas for the older folks. Some of the sixteen-foot-wide units will be a little less expensive and so thus more affordable. And and then the traditional townhomes as well. We we expect, and we put in our statement of justification, you know, we expect that home prices will be similar to that in the watershed community and it's, we can't with any degree of total specificity give a sale price right now because we're quite a ways out from getting our entitlements fully, fully approved. But but, you know, in the range of, for the market rate units, really in the range of four thirty-five to six hundred, to six hundred thousand dollars. Now, impacts on our commute, on our economy obviously have an impact on sale prices. And if interest rates get higher, then the sale price adjustment occurs. And and so it's, you know, we can't tell precisely what these sale prices are going to be, but that the the target range is what's what's happening and what we're seeing in the watershed community because it's a good gauge for the market rate units. That being said, Polty prides itself on providing some elements of affordable and workforce housing in their projects, and this project will will not be different in that regard. And, you know, I've been doing this for a long time and and most often affordable and workforce, you find that occurring in rental units and multifamily units. These are going to be occurring in for-sale, be simple for-sale units here. Everything is going to be a for-sale unit. There are no rentals in this community whatsoever. And so and so what what Polty is proposing here is that they would provide eleven affordable units in the stacked condominium area and eleven workforce units in the sixteen-foot-wide townhouse segment of the community. And they would provide varying levels of of purchase prices. So six of the workforce units would be priced at a hundred and one to a hundred and twenty percent of median income. And that median income level is specified by the U.S. Census Department. They, and those numbers change all the time based upon economic factors. And then five workforce units would be offered for sale at eighty-one percent to to one hundred percent of the median income level. From the affordable, again, there would be six affordable units offered at seventy-one percent to eighty percent of median income level, and five would be offered at sixty-one percent to seventy percent of median income level. So those are commitments that Polty is making. These commitments for these percentages of sale prices will be included in their covenants, in their H O A documents, which will be recorded in the land records. And of course, you know, if we're fortunate enough to be able to take this project through to the ultimate completion of all the entitlements, we fully expect that those commitments will be included in our approval conditions. I do want to talk a little bit about the live-work units that we're proposing. So live-work has become an incredibly popular component to particularly the townhouse projects. It it began really before COVID and began to catch on. A lot of it occurred down in Florida. And then it began to move north. We have seen it here in Prince George's County. I haven't done one in the city of Laurel, but but some in Prince George's County. And then the COVID pandemic just absolutely made the desire to have this opportunity really become much more popular. I think we all understand that there will probably be vacancies in office buildings that will exist forever until those buildings are repurposed in some instances. But there's going to be a lot of work done from home. And these live-work units are permitted in the M X T zone. And 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 the uses that the that the work component would be put to would be the uses permitted as well. The interesting concept of the live-work is that the work portion is separate and apart from the live, the live portion, even though the person living obviously will be coming down to use the office space. But in case there is a business invitee, there is a separate entrance into the work component. So for all twelve of these work units, live-work, they will have rear-loaded garages, and that's where the residential portion of the building will begin to be occupied. There's a separate access usually in the front of the building, and that's what we're proposing here, where folks would come directly into an open area with a door into the the workspace. The workspace is proposed in these units to be six hundred and twenty-three square feet, more or less. That will be flushed out when when final architecture is submitted. The living areas in the live-work units will occur on the second and third floors. And then there's also a habitable attic space in these live-work units. We we propose, in addition to the community building and the swimming pool in the playground, we we propose an extensive pedestrian system that will occur in the community through pedestrian trails and, of course, through sidewalks adjacent to the to the private roads running through. If you look at our statement of justification, really starting on probably page fourteen, fifteen, we have an extensive analysis of how this plan conforms to the requirements of the city code relative to the M X T zone. We feel very confident that we satisfy all of those criteria. I'm not going to bore you with the, you know, the the legal jargon of going through all of those right now, but I I think that the analysis that we have in our statement of justification is comprehensive and establishes not just conformance with the with the criteria for the approval of conceptual site plan in the M X T zone, but also with conformance for the the master plan, both the two thousand and seven plan and two thousand and seventeen plan. So really, with that being said, I think I'll stop talking for a moment and be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. I just want to say that Polty is very excited at the opportunity to develop this property, to bring a a very high-quality product into the marketplace, one that is certainly fully compatible with the other uses that we find in the immediate vicinity and is also a presents a range of housing types that are in high, high demand. So with that being said, thank you so much, and I'd like to answer any questions.
All right, I'll start with Councilman Cole. Any comments or questions?
So I reviewed the application. I like everything that's going on of the conceptual design. I did get to go for a tour of the watershed. It was a nice. What I was trying to figure out on the plan is where will the stormwater go? There's the area in the back that looks kind of like a stream, but does that go somewhere? Or is that a pond? What is, what are you thinking that's going to be?
Yeah, well, again, you know, the stormwater concept plan is, yeah, if we can bring them, bring it up. There we go. There are sensitive environmental features running east to west on the northern section, for lack of a better term, of the community. The stormwater management concept plan has not yet been completed. But as you see the cursor down in the southwest corner, we we plan to have stormwater facilities down in that area. We do have Ken Dunn, our civil engineer, who possibly could respond more more fully to that than I can.
Sure. Thanks, Ed. What I would, I would tell you that while you touched on some of the basics, Ed, we will, under state of Maryland law, we will have to provide what's called environmental site design, which typically take the form of micro bio-retentions for these smaller stormwater management facilities that are located in amongst the property in order to address the needs of the micro drainage areas. So so there'll be, there'll be these water quality devices spread out amongst the areas in the open space if you're looking at in and around the units themselves. And and that that will, that will do the major portion of addressing the needs for water quality control measures. And you were right. The area in green-red is an environmentally constrained area, which is why we're trying not to impact that area. We've taken care just to put a few road crossings, perpendicular road crossings in there. So there's the amount of disturbance as much as possible to that environmentally constrained area.
Thank you. I was just making sure that wasn't like a drainage stream and we'd be dumping all the water on somebody else's property.
Well, I mean, it's running downhill.
Yeah.
But it is environmentally constrained.
Okay, but there would be something, some other facility over on the southwest.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
And and also, Councilman, you know, we are required to create facilities that will not allow the discharge of stormwater to exceed the volumes that occur on the property in its natural state. To exceed the volumes that occur on the property in its natural state. I, I think I'm right in saying that, Ken.
That's correct.
And so, and, and I, I think, uh, Councilman, I think it, you toured, uh, I know you toured watershed. And I, I think that there were examples of the sensitive uh stormwater treatments. That Pulte has implemented out there, and that's the same type of uh sensitive design that's gonna occur on this project. If we're fortunate enough to be able to bring it to fruition.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Councilman, uh, I'll call him. Councilman DeWalt, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, I have a, uh, just a couple from Mr. Gibbs. Um, at the first meeting that we had with you guys, we, we were asked, well, I was asking about the uh. Mostly my concern is with the affordable housing in this workforce thing, which I've never heard before, workforce housing. Um, we still haven't narrowed it down to any prices is what, of what it's gonna cost for these particular areas. Now, we, at least we got, I got educated that none of these will be rentals, but they will be all for sale. Until such a, when do you figure, at one point during this process. Do you figure that you're gonna be able to tell us exactly what these workforce houses? And these affordable housing units are actually gonna cost?
Right, yes, sir. Uh, a very fair question. Um, so again, uh, you know. The city, the city doesn't uh have uh a definition. Of uh affordable or workforce that relates to for-sale units. You do have a definition uh of similar type units, but it's for, it's for rentals. Um, uh, you know, we will determine the uh median income, and, and, and as an example, I mean, we will work with you. Uh, as we determine uh what, what formula is used to compute median income. Uh, I think that uh Mr. DiMarco may have something to add here, but. If you were to use median income for the city of Laurel from the U.S. Census uh reports. Uh, that median income, I believe, is around two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars annually. Um, uh. Or for, 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 for the sale price. And so that, that would be a number, and, and maybe Mr. DiMarco could chime in here and, and help us out a little bit.
Yes, I, I mean, we can, we can prepare some examples for you. We're just, we're trying to actually help facilitate language for the ordinance that doesn't exist today. By mirroring language we have done in other jurisdictions. But what we, what we can do, and I, it is the median household income. Um, so that, so that is, you know, that, that will be. Uh, like what we could do is we can tell you, here's what, here's kind of a range of pricing. For the different, you know, lower-level condominium units that are gonna be affordable. As well as the sixteen-foot townhouses, which are gonna be workforce. We can give, we can show you some examples of what it could be. If the, if the uh median household income stayed the same to, you know, to, you know, when we sell these as it is today, if that would be helpful.
I, I think also, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think also, at the time when we came to file the preliminary subdivision plan. Uh, we, we could say, this is the number today. Uh, and it will only change by any factors that might occur between the time of the preliminary plan and going to actual market with the units themselves. Is that a fair statement, David?
Sure, I mean, I, I'd even go as far since, you know, it depends on how you wanna see it. I can, I can tell you that on the affordable units, we break even. We don't, we don't make any money. Uh, we try not to lose any money. Um, the workforce units, it's, it's a little bit better. You know, we get our costs back plus something. But if you would prefer that we come up with specific pricing, I'm happy to do that and commit to that.
If, be, um, I just, I just wanna let you guys know that before I vote on something like this. I wanted it, I wanna know if, if it's actually affordable. And that people can afford it, because we're, we, in the city of Laurel, we are lacking desperately. On affordable housing and getting people into homes. We're actually getting people evicted from homes. By some of these landlords and some of these corporations. And I don't wanna see that happen in the future. So that's what I'm gearing towards, is getting some sort of price. Or some sort of figure that I can get to see if that's actually gonna be affordable for somebody in, in our communities.
I'll be happy to provide that. I mean, it, believe me, it's definitely affordable. I think what happened with the way the markets evolved, you said you haven't heard the term workforce. Uh, the affordable, the workforce is like for the teachers, the firemen, the policemen, you know, some of them are getting priced out of the market. And that's why this workforce housing category was created. It's somewhere in between affordable, which is for the, the very basic uh form of housing. Uh, it, it's in between that and the market-rate housing. But I'm happy to give you, we're happy to commit to prices is similar to what we've outlined.
Okay, I would like to, I would like to get them before I cast my vote for this. Thank you.
And Councilman Mitchell, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, thank you uh for the presentation. I um, I definitely visited the property. Uh, it was lovely homes. The, the only question I have was uh, have you guys considered any of those units uh to be like deeply affordable? Or will we, will we consider deeply affordable?
I, I don't know the definition of deeply affordable, but uh based on the formulas we're using, the affordable housing units are, is, is. Like you said, we, we barely break even on them.
Yeah, no, cuz that, cuz from what I was, I think it was like eighty, sixty, eighty percent, right, of the. Yeah. Median income, right?
Yeah, medium household income. But what I'm gonna do, uh, Mr. Mitchell, is I'm gonna actually figure out the math. And we'll, we'll commit to the pricing for those units. Um, with some, I'll have some standard escalator in there, you know, just like we do for fees. Um, between now and the time we go to sell, if that's acceptable to you, we're happy to do that.
Sure, I mean, it, cuz what I was, what I was, of course, referring to is more like twenty, thirty percent of the area median income being deeply affordable. Uh, so that, that was a, exactly what I meant.
Okay.
To be more specific. Good thinking.
And uh, some of my questions are actually answered, so. Uh. I don't have any more to add on top of that, but uh. All right, well.
Mr. President.
Yes.
If I could, Mr. Marco, while you're on the line and we're making commitments, I also wanna make sure everyone understands. Your numbers would be at a three hundred and two. At a three hundred and two units, if that were all approved. Is that correct, is what you would base a lot of this on?
Absolutely. It's a, it's a percentage based on the total yield of.
So I wanna make sure everybody's clear. You might give a price, and it gets down to the commission level. And the commission might turn around and cut it by fifty units or whatever, as an example. That's gonna change that number.
Correct. We, we hope that doesn't happen, but you're absolutely right. If there's less total units, there'll be less affordable units offered.
Right, so I, I wanna make sure that's clear with everyone as well. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, thank you for that presentation, Mr. Gibbs. Um. Council agrees. Introduction and first public hearing on this item will be at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-three at six P.M.
Thank, thank you uh very much, and uh, Mayor Mo, appreciate your comments and clarifications. Uh, that was significant. And uh, once again, we really appreciate everyone's time and attention and the questions. Uh, and we will uh be working on coming up with answers to those questions uh as we move forward through this process. And we look forward to uh seeing everyone again uh on January ninth.
All right.
Thank you. On behalf of Pulte, we appreciate everybody's time tonight.
Thank you. Well, the last agenda item is resolution number one dash two zero two three. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to establish a bicycle pedestrian citizens advisory committee. Uh, Mayor Mo, you'll have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, pretty simple. We've been um thinking about this for quite some time. Um. And thought it might be beneficial um from citywide for a resolution of the Mayor and City Council. To establish a bicycle and pedestrian citizens advisory committee, I think. Uh, in particular, what we just heard, some of that might be useful as we move forward with. Um, more bike paths and more uh pedestrian walkways, those types of things. Uh, but this resolution would um pretty much establish a uh bicycle and pedestrian citizens advisory committee. Um, it would uh work with uh city officials and staff on sound development, management of. Uh, the safe use of our city's uh bicycle lanes or pedestrian. Um, systems as related to infrastructure accessibility and safety enhancements, and promoting the benefits of. These uh systems as well as um teaching those or working with police department or other um city departments. On uh the correct way and the manner of riding bicycles, where you ride bicycles. Uh, working with groups that um. That deal with this type of, uh, when we talk about uh pedestrian and bicycle. Um, uh groups that are out there to help benefit the city. This committee uh would be seven voting members, it'd be three-year terms. Uh, the committee chair and the uh vice chair would be elected by the uh, the membership annually. Um, they would have uh at least um bimonthly meetings at the times and places as uh set by the chair. Uh, talks about quorum, it talks about the duties and responsibilities. Um, and it's uh just another opportunity to really drill down and focus on. Uh, things that the Mayor and City Council have been working on, and that is on bicycle um. Uh, paths, pathways, pedestrians, our bicycle, uh bridges and, and pathways. Uh, as well as pedestrian uh bridges and, and walkways, and uh really get out there and e- educate the community as well. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I have a couple.
Sure, Councilman DeWalt.
So does some of this stuff already fall under current advisory committees? Like the transportation one, or how is this different? Is it pulling something from other committees? Um, not, not that I looked at. Again, the transportation and safety, they look at uh things, and Councilman DeWalt's on, on the line as well. Um, but this would really focus more, we have our bicycle master plan that needs to be updated. So it'd be a citizens group that has to, to revise and work with staff on that. Um, as well, he just really, in my view, drill down um on um, you know, bikes. How they're proper use, as well as where they should be ridden, the infrastructure needed, they could go after grants, working with staff. Uh, those types of things. So um, I don't see where it really pulls from anybody else, if anybody, um unless uh Mr. DeWalt has anything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have another question on the, the funding stuff that was mentioned in the, in the, in the packet. It said this would open us up to some grants. Are there, are there grants that we have to have a, a committee like this for? No, no, I say they would be able to uh work and assist in uh identifying grants, working with some nonprofit. Bicycle organizations that are already out in the community, uh those types of things. All right, thank you. That's all my questions, Mr. President.
Yeah, anyone else? No, well, the council agrees. Introduction and first public hearing on this item. Be at the Mayor and City Council meeting on Monday, January ninth, two thousand twenty at six P.M. There being no further business to come before the Mayor and City Council meeting tonight. This meeting is adjourned.